Go live.
Can you guys hear me?
Let us know when we're live, we'll start.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
And you're live now.
Okay, thank you. And it's now seven thirty-one. I would like to call to order the June eighth meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic where which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, if you please read the prepared statement and call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Langella.
Present.
Mr. Sachinelli.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hugman.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Ms. Revulus.
Here.
Ms. Young. Mr. Kites.
Here.
Mr. Theodridis.
Here.
Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenides.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. And to go back, Ms. Young.
Here.
Fourteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion? Mr. Hugman moves. Any corrections, deletions, omissions, additions? I don't see any hands, so all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Motion carries. Any opposition? Any?
Mayor, I abstain.
George. Theodridis. Abstains. I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda, public participation. Mr. Manzi, do we have anybody wishing to address the council?
We currently have none.
Okay, and does Ms. King, do we have any correspondence that you received?
No.
Do we have any correspondence of any council member received that needs to be read into the record? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public participation and move to the mayor's section of the council. There are no resignations or appointments. In my remarks, first, I would like to thank everybody on the council, thank everybody on my staff and the people of Norwalk. As we emerge from this pandemic, our numbers are trending in the right direction. Our vaccine numbers are going up and our COVID nineteen numbers are going down. And so we're starting to see that light at the end of the tunnel that we've been talking about for the last six months or more. And I'm really, really pleased. And again, it was a really cooperative effort. The people of Norwalk really stood up and did what we needed to do in order to make this happen. And the council and my staff were tremendously instrumental in also working together to make the tough decisions, to do the things we needed to do in order to get this thing under control. So we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to have a a nice summer. As you know, we've scheduled five concerts. Four down at the beach, one at Betts Park. We're starting to look towards the nice festival, the Oyster Festival, the Sono Arts Festival. All those really, really nice things that we enjoy, and now we're hopefully going to be able to enjoy them again. Also, on Saturday, June twelfth, four organizations will join together shredding for charity from nine AM to twelve. They will be at the parking lot in City Hall. Take your papers there that you don't want to dispose of. It's always a good way to do that. So they get shredded and therefore you minimize or perhaps eliminate any chance of anybody stealing information that could lead to identity theft. They'll charge a small fee and the charity will go to the fee will go to the senior center Meals on Wheels program. So it's a win-win all around. June third, I'm sorry, number three, June is Pride Month. The Triangle Community Center will be holding a series of smaller events this year. They are hoping to celebrate next year with their annual Pride in the Park celebration, for instance, on this Saturday. And I didn't get a picture of those beautiful backgrounds that our council people have. So if somebody will be so kind enough to send me one, I'll make sure that I include it. But this Saturday at eleven thirty, they're having the Pride Sail Parade, S A I L. And several boats will be meeting at Peach Island, flying the flag parade, going upriver towards Oyster Bend. Turning around, coming back, going to Sheffield Island, and there will be a lobster bake. Price is seventy-five dollars for anybody who wishes to join the lobster bake. It's going to be Clyde Ripka is providing the food. And I was at a lobster bake there about three weeks ago, and it was absolutely remarkable. So let's celebrate Pride Month. The middle school promotions this year will be held on Wednesday, June sixteenth. And anybody that wishes to join, you can contact my office and find out where they're going to be held. Some will be held at Norwalk High, some will be held at Rotten Middle, some will be held at Brian McMahon. So it's always a fun time to watch the young people rising from middle school, going into high school, the last four years of their public education. And they're excited about it. They're feeling much more grown up. So if you'd like to join us, please feel free to do that. Norwalk High School and P Tech graduation will be held on Thursday, June seventeenth. And Brian McMahon High School graduation will be held on Friday, June eighteenth. So again, it's always a wonderful ceremony to see our young people, some going off to college, some going into the military, some going into the labor force. And it's really great to watch them moving into that next chapter of their lives and hearing the comments from the valedictorians and other people who get a chance to speak. On January first, eighteen sixty-three, no, I wasn't there, Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. Not until June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, were enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas liberated by federal troops. Every year, we commemorate Juneteenth on the nineteenth of June, and we will be doing the same this year. Again, details will be available through my office if you wish, or anybody can send. I think this probably on the website, but we want everybody to remember this day by encouraging positive action across the land. You know, one of the themes lately has been just, just do something good for no reason whatsoever. Just do something good. And that's certainly a day that we should be thinking about that. So I have nothing else to speak about. And I will now turn the program over or the floor over to the council president, Mr. Sachinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, before we read the consent calendar, Mr. Hugman has prepared a statement that he would like to read into the record. Mr. Hugman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Sachinelli. I speak to you tonight as a private citizen who serves you, the residents of Norwalk and who is a member of this council. Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, chiefs and staff of our city government and all of you whom we serve. I am saddened by the events of last week where our city hired two police officers who subsequently resigned because of incidents which came to light after the officers were named. As a white person of empathy and compassion, I turn to you, my neighbors and colleagues of color, to help me to understand your journey. So together we may use our influence to help make the changes needed to bring equity to the forefront of all processes and to change the systems that were originally created by our white founding fathers. What happened last week troubled me greatly. Mistakes were made, and I am heartened by the fact that we have leaders willing to own those mistakes, willing to come forward and state that. But we need more. Teetering on the one-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd, we should be better at this. I am troubled that any incident concerning an officer-involved shooting would not set off alarm bells by an investigator anywhere in our world, let alone Norwalk, Connecticut. We must do better. I too am troubled by the rise of crime in the streets of our nation, but I am more troubled that one of the excuses being used for this is that we are asking for accountability from our police, and they are now afraid to do their job. This is a troubling paradigm that is being set in motion and is deflecting the conversation away from the changes that we need to make. The change that is needed lies within all of us. We need to stop looking outside for answers, but rather look inward. We need to know each other and to treat each other with dignity. To this, to do this, we need our police to know the people that they serve, and we, the people, need to know the police. The phrases that are becoming all too common on both sides are only serving to divide us further. Defund the police, back the blue. These only fuel this divide. We need to know more than just the faces of those who live in our community and more than the faces of those who serve us. Only then do we become human to each other and not a uniform or a hoodie on a corner. I charge all of us to leave our homes and talk to each other and get to know each other. This level of human relationship can only serve to make us stronger. We, as the elected leaders elected by all of the people, you who are our leaders, we need to take on the big tasks by reforming these systems. Charter regulations and ordinances that do not serve the community as a whole need to be scrutinized and changed. Systems that may once have served our community but have now evolved to harm need to be changed. We need to lead this change and show others that we have the skills needed to live as a twenty-first century diverse, proud, strong, unified community. And this starts with all of us. It starts with us listening to each other, and it needs to start now. I'm glad that our mayor and our chief took action and were willing to listen and begin a journey to strengthen the hiring process for our police department. But this is only the beginning. I hope that we can use this example and move our city forward and thus become stronger for it. Thank you. I appreciate the time. Back to you, President Sachinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Hugman. And yes, I agree. We all, we all need to work to make Norwalk a better place. Thank you for that. Tonight, the consent calendar is going to be read by Mr. Manny Langella. Manny, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Sachinelli, and thank you, Councilperson Hugman. Tonight's consent calendar. A. Health and Public Safety Committee. A one A authorized the purchasing agent Sharon Connors to issue a purchase order to GAC, DBA, New England Traffic Solutions for the purchase and installation of security cameras and voice call box at five fire stations, bid number four zero eight two, for the amount not to exceed forty-one thousand from account number noted. A two A authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Badge Quest Incorporated to conduct the police promotional testing for the ranks of detective, sergeant, and lieutenant for some not to exceed thirty-nine thousand from account number noted. A two B authorized the police chief, Thomas E. Chaholic, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, and amendments thereto as may be necessary to implement police-written promotional testing and assessment centers for the ranks of detective, sergeant, and lieutenant. B. Planning Committee. B two approved the two thousand twenty-one applications for referral to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services for the inclusion in the two thousand twenty-one Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. B three authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Vanessa Hangin, Breslin Incorporated, parentheses, VHB, parentheses, for the design of a roundabout on Gregory Boulevard at Fifth Street for an amount not to exceed ten thousand six hundred dollars, account number noted. B four authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an assignment of capital funds, the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the Norwalk River Valley Trail Incorporated, a five oh one dash C, to assist in the construction of the Will Walk section of the Norwalk River Valley Trail, account number noted. C. Public Works Committee. C one, technical correction of the Common Council Action, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, item V two dot C dot two to authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Woods Men's and Boys Clothing for project number four zero eight seven for a sum not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred eighty thousand for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Eighteen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and eighteen thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. With an option to extend for two additional terms of one year each. Account number noted to authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Woods Men's and Boys Clothing Product for the project number. I'm sorry, my apologies, it's the same. I'm going to go ahead and just continue reading this. It appears to be the same writing, but I'll read it out. Authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Woods Men's and Boys Clothing for project number four zero eight seven for a sum not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred eighty from a period from July first, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, eighteen thousand one hundred forty-eight for the period from July first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and eighteen thousand four forty-seven for the period from July first, two thousand twenty-five, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, account number noted. C two techno- technical correction of the Common Council Action, September eighth, two thousand twenty, item V two point A point six to add accounts designated for Anamane Kirby LLC for on-call surveying services, account numbers noted, two account numbers noted. D. Land Use and Building Management Committee. D one authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an assistance agreement with the Norwalk Historical Society for the production of a permanent exhibit of Norwalk's history from ten thousand B.C. to eighteen thirty-five for the townhouse at Mill Hill Historic Park for a total not to exceed eighty-four thousand, account number noted. D two authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to the interim license agreement with the Riverbuck Regional Young Men's Christian Association Incorporated, also known as YMCA, for the occupancy of portions of ninety-eight South Main Street building to provide community service programs by extending the agreement period from July first, two thousand twenty-one, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. All remaining terms of the agreement to remain unchanged. D three authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Silver Petrosilius Associates to provide architectural design services for the South Norwalk Library for a total not to exceed twelve thousand three hundred, account number noted. D four authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an ever-source new construction and major renovations memorandum of understanding for path two whole building energy use intensity, EUI, production cost share agreement for Cranberry School. The city is responsible for up to twenty-five percent of twenty thousand or five thousand for TA, Technical Assistance Vendor Services that include energy, charrette facilitation, EUI target setting, energy modeling, and mid-design review and feedback, account number noted. D five A authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to the agreement with AV Tucci Builders as the construction manager, CM, for Narimac Elementary School Kitchen Cafeteria Media Center Improvement Project to accept the guaranteed maximum price in the amount of two million six hundred eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents, account number noted. D five B authorized the land use and building management committee to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed two hundred and four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars. D seven authorized the Office of Building Management to execute change orders on contract with Guardian Service Industries Incorporated to provide project management and labors necessary to implement phase one of the middle school bathroom renovation project for the summer of two thousand twenty-one for a total not to exceed eighty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Funds are available in capital budget account number noted, and that is the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Excuse me. I will proceed with a roll call vote. Person Greg Burnett.
Hi.
Councilperson Dominique Johnson.
Yes.
Councilperson Manny Langella.
Yes.
Councilperson Nick Sachinelli.
Hi.
Councilperson Barbara Smith.
Yes.
Councilperson David Hugman.
Hi.
Councilperson Kadim Roberts.
Hi.
Councilperson Diana Revulus.
Hi.
Councilperson Darlene Young.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Councilperson John Kites.
Yes.
Councilperson George Theodridis.
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Keegan.
Yes.
Councilperson George Serenides.
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Livingston.
Yes.
And Councilperson Shanahan is absent. We, we are unanimous. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachinelli. So if I'm correct, the first item off consent is seven B one, Mr. Kites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item B one authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to the agreement by in between the city of Norwalk and Utah Inc. in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for additional scope of services to conduct the Norwalk Urban Waterfront Land Use Plan. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to move that item and speak to it briefly.
Right ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you all remember, a few months back, we contracted with Utah for an industrial study. And in that study, there was some, what, there was a some work to be done with our industrial waterfronts. Both the planning committee and economic development and zoning felt that that scope needed to be widened. And that's what brings us here tonight. We're like, we're expanding on the scope of work that was originally contracted with Utah to take a deeper dive into our industrial waterfront. So but with us tonight, Mr. Kleppin, do you mind giving the council a brief summary of how we got to this point, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everybody. And I can be very brief because I know you have a busy agenda. So we had contracted with Utah to take on the industrial zone study. They began that work about eight months ago. They just gave us a draft copy of the report last week, which staff is reviewing now. But as we started getting into the work, we really wanted to look at the waterfront more closely at that time. But as we started really getting into it, it became a much more complex issue than we thought because there, you know, obviously landward, there's enough issues as it is. But when you add coastal properties with potential for sea level rise, how deep are the water channels to accommodate certain types of uses? And then, you know, factoring in water quality and other things that we want to ensure. And, you know, the conflict sometimes between land uses and the public's desire to access the waterfront. We, we thought we needed to, as Mr. Kites mentioned, broaden the scope and look at it a little more closely, which is kind of why we requested the additional funds. So hopefully this will pass tonight, and Utah will get working on that portion of the study. And I think we can wrap that up probably in about eight months from start date, which will coincide with what's going on with the, you know, with the other study I'll be wrapping up. And, you know, we're working on the zoning that results from that, and that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Kleppin. Mr. Kites, do you have anything else to comment on on that or?
I think Steve pretty much summarized that very well.
Okay, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment in support of this. I think it's critical that we, we do this right. I mean, the waterfront is one of the city's greatest assets, and I think spending a little extra dollars, a little more time is really well worth the effort because we got to get this right. It's so important to the city, both for the citizens and economically for businesses. So I fully support this, and thank you, Steve, for doing it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to see the hand in the white background. Yes, I too would just like to voice my support for this. I think it's a long time coming, actually. And the waterfront is underutilized in many ways. And I think that this can, you know, give us some guidance in terms of how businesses can be helped, how we can activate the waterfront for our citizens and activities. But doing it carefully while protecting the waterways. So I think it's really important. So I fully support it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add, I'm also happy and give my thanks to the departments involved, especially given the feedback from the community during the public meeting about the Utah study. And so I'm, I'm happy that the, the citizens of Norwalk, the residents of Norwalk were listened to so intently and that this result, I think, is, is a demonstration of being listened to. So I want to thank everybody on that.
Mr. Hugman.
Yes, I just want to add my support. I think this is fantastic that we're stepping up to do this. I mean, we have one of the, I believe, almost the largest waterfront in the state of Connecticut, and it's important that we, that we do this right, as Councilman Livingston said. And I'm excited because I hope that this will find opportunities for us to really activate the waterfront in many ways, whether it's economic or just for enjoyment and recreation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Kites.
Actually, I just wanted to just throw a shout out to Steve. This has been kicking around from what I hear at City Hall for quite some time. You picked up the ball, you ran with it. And not with just with the waterfront, but with the industrial zone study as a whole. So I really liked the proactive approach you took and, you know, picked and made this happen because we wouldn't be here without you, Stephen. Thank you.
Well, you'd be here, but without the study. But thank you, though.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Steve. Thank you very much. Next item off consent would be seven D six, I believe. Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read and move the ad and then speak to it for a moment. Thank you. Authorized the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Gilbane Building Company as the construction manager for the Norwalk High School new construction project. Terms to the agreement shall include the following: pre-construction phase services, including reimbursable allowance, three hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred sixty dollars. CM fees as a percentage of total cost of construction, one point eight five percent. CM contingency as a percent of total trade bids, two point five percent. Following the bidding process, final guaranteed maximum price will be submitted to Common Council for approval, account noted. So this is the next step in the construction of the new Norwalk High School. Gilbane was selected for the pre-construction phase to assist in the development of plans and specifications to the new school and to provide estimating services for the state submission. And then following, as the, as a resolution noted, following the pre-construction phase, a bidding phase for actual construction work will take place. And a final contract price for the project will be submitted to the council for approval. And in terms of the process, Gilbane was selected after an RFQP process. They were one of two finalists, both of which were considered very well qualified. The review committee found no significant cost differential between the two finalists and selected Gilbane based on the completeness of their qualification statement proposal, quality of their presentation, and most importantly, their past working experience with the city, including managing the previous Norwalk High School renovation project in two thousand and five. So it's a really good group, and I think we'd be lucky to have them. And if there are any questions, Alan Lowe is here to answer them.
Okay, any further comments or discussion? Mr. Keegan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions for Mr. Lowe. I do have a statement. I have a number of concerns as I've had in the past regarding the Norwalk High School project. I'm worried about our capital budget debt limit, four hundred dollars, and the debt service that is associated with it. And I'm concerned that we won't have funds available to us for other projects that are also needed in the city, be it fire apparatus or sidewalks or paving. And I also believe our South Norwalk Elementary Schools should be prioritized. I think they have been. And they should be built before we begin to think about a new Norwalk High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, Ms. King, would you take a roll call vote?
Also, woman Johnson seemed to have a question to say.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Councilwoman Revulus. I, I, no, I was going to ask, and then I, well, now I'll call the question. It's all good. I, I just want to be, make more of a clarification if, if Mr. Lowe can speak to this. This money we'd be approving tonight is not in any way setting us on a path to take a particular design. For example, we're not reclaiming the, the field by take a particular design. For example, we're not reclaiming the field by moving down this path right now. This is more of an exploratory step. Is that right, Mr. Lowe?
I'm sorry, I have some technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, can you? I'm sorry. Can we state a question, please?
Sure, sure.
I'm sorry about that.
No worries. The gist is this money we're approving tonight is just for pre-construction. It's not even deciding a site. For example, the athletic field opposite the current school. None of that is being decided tonight. It's just to enable to work about design.
Yeah, let me just go really quickly. We had hired the OPTEC. The OPTEC right now is going through what we consider a programming phase. So we're meeting with representatives of the school, both PK, not PK, P Tech as well as North High School, different divisions to talk about the education program, these spatial needs and stuff like that. So we are in the middle of it. We tried to do this before the end of semester. So at the same time, we hired the construction manager. All we hired him to do is pre-construction phase. The pre-construction phase really is working with the design team to start doing cost estimating, to look at construction phasing, because we keep, we are going to operate a school fully operational while we're doing construction. So the phasing part is very critical. We go look at value engineering to make sure we maximize the funding that we have in terms of the construction methods, and also value engineering. We deal with the technical side of construction material and, you know, whether you use different type of studs, walls, and type of ceilings and stuff to maximize, to reduce costs and maximize production or end product. So there they go. And then after we go through the design phases with the construction manager, then they're going to work with OPTEC to design the construction bid package and go out to bid. So that's a limit of the scopes under this space. So yes, we are not doing construction at this point. It's really planning, cost estimating, and other services that I mentioned before.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Councilwoman Revellus. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Now I don't see any. So Ms. King, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burnett.
Hi.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Langella.
Yes.
Mr. Satchinelli.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Huberman.
Hi.
Mr. Roberts.
Hi.
Ms. Revellus.
Hi.
Ms. Young. Mr. Kites.
Yes.
Mr. Theoretis.
Yes.
Mr. Keegan.
No.
Mr. Serenades.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Yes.
Mr. Livingston.
Yes.
13, yes. One, no.
Motion carries. Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, wait.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Any opposed? How about an abstention?
We didn't have Ms. Shanahan here tonight to jump right in on that.
I hear you. Thank you all for your time this evening, and thank you for your hard work on behalf of the city. The meeting is adjourned.
All right, good night.